Good evening and welcome to the August 21st, 2017, meeting of the Gasson County Board of Education. My name is Kevin Collier and to my left is the Vice Chair, Mr. Jeff Ramsey, and I'm going to let the board members present introduce themselves, starting on to my right.
Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Hey, good afternoon. Chris Howell, South Point Township.
Kathryn Roberts, Dallas Township.
Dr. Cherry, at large, member.
Thank you. Mr. Moore could not be with us tonight, and we wish Mr. Usher a speedy recovery, and who cannot be with us because of health reasons tonight. On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome everybody that's watching on TV, the Internet, and folks that are here tonight. We've been busy this summer, and next Monday is a really big day. Children go back to school, and there's a lot of people that'll be up all night worried about things that turn on, air conditioning that's working, motors and things like that. So it's a big, big day. We're finishing up a lot of projects this summer and been very, very busy and working up to the last minute to get schools open this year. The next order of business is our prayer and pledge. I'm going to recognize Mr. Howell for our prayer, and if you'll start us with the pledge when you're finished.
First of all, I want to say I love you, Lord. I thank you for the opportunity to serve you in this capacity on this board with you tonight, or that it would be an honor and pleasing to you. Lord, we pray for the things that are going on within Gasson County schools, the teachers, and the staffs and administrations that are coming back that are getting busy. And God, I pray that you would protect them. God, I pray that you, with our students, that you would encourage them or that they would sense the excitement of what they're coming to. God, a lifetime of learning. God, I pray that you direct this meeting and the things that we do and the things that we say would not only be beneficial to this county, the citizens, the families, the children, the staff, the teachers, God, that it would also be an honor and pleasing to you. Lord, again, we thank you for who you are. We love you and say these things in your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda. I need a motion. A motion by Ms. Cherry, second by Mr. Dedman. Any questions, comments? Mr. Howell.
Mr. Chair, thank you for recognizing me. I would like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to add an action item to dispose of what this board deems as surplus property located at or around the current Stewart-Cramer High School in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 115(c) 518, disposition of school property, easements and right-of-ways according to the procedures prescribed in North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 160a, Article 12, or any successor provisions thereto. I believe this board has agreed that this land does not have a viable use for several key reasons for Gasson County schools, and I'd like to see us direct the staff to complete this task within the next 30 days. This amended agenda item could be placed as Item 8A under the Operations Committee report. We have discussed this particular issue for months, and I believe it's time that we cleared off our to-do list. In looking at the general statute that I quoted, we would offer that to county commissioners per the general statute that have an opportunity to purchase at a fair market value rate. If they deem not to do that, then it would go according to the process of how government works. So I'd like to add that to that. And then, once we make that a yes or a no or a second, then I have a second item.
All right. I have a substitute motion to the agenda by Mr. Howell, and I have a second. Let's get a second before we start. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. A second by Ms. Roberts. Ms. Roberts has a question, and we're having discussion now.
Okay. You're wanting to start, Mr. Howell, you're wanting to start this process, correct?
Yeah, start the process. We've talked about it since May, I believe, of this year, that that property was going to be a challenge to use, and not only a challenge to use, but it was also going to be difficult in the sense of the city of Cramerton wanting to give us what we needed to be able to do anything with it. We've agreed with the county commissioners that we would release that excess property, and in doing so, they would have first shot at it according to the general statute as I read it, unless I'm wrong. Ms. McGraw could advise me or us on that. And then, but go ahead and start that process, get it off our to-do list, because Operations Committee has a lot to do right now, and if we can go ahead and get that one out of the way and check that box, we can keep moving.
Mr. Howell, I couldn't agree with you more about releasing the property. We all agreed to do that. I just need to make sure we're doing everything legally, what we're supposed to be doing, and I would defer to, I guess that's going to be Mr. Brinjwad and Ms. McGraw, to make sure that we are taking the proper steps. You quoted a statute I'm not familiar with, but I'd just have to defer to our counsel.
The 115(c) 518 says, "When in the opinion of any local Board of Education, the use of any building site or other real property or personal property owned or held by the Board is unnecessary or undesirable for public school purposes, the local Board of Education may dispose of such according to the procedures prescribed in General Statutes, Chapter 160a, Article 12, or any successor provision thereto, provided when any real property to which the Board holds title to is no longer suitable or necessary for public school purpose. The Board of County Commissioners for the county in which the property is located shall be afforded the first opportunity to obtain the property. The Board of Education shall offer the property to the Board of Commissioners at a fair market price or at the price negotiated between the two boards. If the Board of Commissioners do not choose to obtain the property as offered, the Board of Education may dispose of such property according to the procedures as herein provided, provided that no state or federal regulations would prohibit such action." I'm not asking that we check the box of how to do that, it's just that we give the staff, release them to go do that. And from what I read in 115(c) 518, we have to determine that as a board.
Ms. Cherry.
Was this discussed in an Operations Committee and agreed upon by the whole committee, or is this coming from you?
My understanding is this has been discussed by the board that we should release that property and agreed to, to the commissioners, that we would do so. We just haven't ever formally started the process. If I'm not correct, I was incorrect.
I'm talking about to formally start the process. Has this been discussed in your, in your committee?
We've discussed that we need to go ahead and check that box. Did we discuss our last board meeting that was, minutes were given at the last board meeting that we would do this? No.
Ms. McGraw.
The motion is to adopt the agenda and whether or not to add this as an item to the agenda. So I think we should go back and revisit that before we talk about the substance of the motion.
Well, I've accepted this as a substitute motion to the motion and second of the agenda. Is that out of order?
Well, so if you want to add it to the agenda, it can be added. He's asked it to be added as an action item. I would like to comment on that as well. But whether or not it's added to the agenda is where we are in the point where it is.
Okay. Well, I'm just having a discussion before we vote whether to add it or not. And if you'd like to comment on the topic, I'd welcome that.
Well, I would caution this board about taking any action on an item that wasn't previously noticed to the public on the agenda. That would be my caution. And if you have questions about the substance of the motion and may need some further guidance about that, you'd probably want to allow staff to take a look at that to see how to advise you on that.
Ms. Ramsey.
Yeah, the only comment I would have, I have probably concern about an action item. I don't mind discussing it. We have talked about it before as a whole board that, you know, through the purchase of Belmont Middle School, but I don't think I can sit here tonight and action item because I think we, the legal aspects of it, we don't, we're not sure. And also, I'd like the Operations Committee at least go on and vote on and then bring it to the board also.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to try to smile when I ask this because it's not a dart being thrown by no means, and I don't want it to be taken that way. But it is my understanding, because I've been at these meetings, that we've talked about doing this since May, that it was a cloud hanging over our head as soon as the commissioners voted in whatever that was, March or April, that we should build a school on it, which we know is going to be extremely difficult. And then, second, it's extremely difficult to get any type of permitting from the town of Cramerton. And we've talked about doing this. So why has this particular topic not already been researched, sought out, knowing that this board sees that as a necessity, as the county commissioners say that it is something they desire that we do in proceeding forward with the purchase of the land in Belmont and some of the other things that we're going to do in the future? Why has it not been looked at so far as what it's going to take to do that so that we would have the answers when that was May, and now here we are, September, almost September? And again, that's not a dart. I'm not, we've been very busy this summer. I'm not taking away from that. It's just that is one item that has been on our to-do list, as far as I know, as a board, since that timeframe, so.
Okay. Mr. Dedman.
I don't have any problem with what Mr. Howell's asking, with the exception, we don't need to have an action item. I wish you would amend it to have our staff approach, the county staff, and say, "Let's get together and do this." We have told them that we're going to do that for them. The way you read that right there, they're going to have to give us a price on that. I thought we gave it to them. I thought that was their land, they didn't have to buy it from us, but I don't know the law. But I could go along with, no, I don't want it to be an action item, but I would go along with our staff sitting down with their staff immediately and saying, "Hey, what can we do to get rid of that?" Because they have closed on the land last week. I mean, the land now belongs to us, and I assume that they are going to fulfill their obligation to build that school, and I think we need to give them that, that property. But I don't think we need to vote on it tonight without having our legal counsel and having their people and our people sit down, whether it was with Gary or whoever, and say, "Hey, how can we transfer this over as quickly as possible?"
Ms. Howell.
So considering I have two things, I'd be willing to retract that and we not even vote on it if we can get some kind of commitment that we're going to have this ready for the next board meeting that we have, that we can move forward on something. We have a meeting, I think, September the 11th as an Operations Committee. We do not know yet if we're having a September work session or not on the 5th, with the 4th being a holiday. I just, it is a to-do list item that we can clean up off our, off our chalkboard and move on to bigger and better things. So if we can get some kind of commitment that we can move on something at our next regular scheduled board meeting, then I'm okay. I'll retract the motion.
Ms. Howell, it would please me if you would retract it. I don't, I'm a little surprised tonight, wasn't really prepared to talk about it. And I don't want to end up, anybody on this board looking like they're voting against that when I think this board is in agreement with it. So I think if we all have more time to understand, get a clear picture, I think I'd rather this board be unanimous on what we're doing with that. Okay?
I'll retract it. Can I go for the second one then?
All right. With retraction of Mr. Howell's motion, the first motion is on the floor. Any more comments? All right. With no comments, I'm going to call for the vote on the first motion and second.
For the agenda as it is or for the amended?
No, for the agenda as it is.
I have a second amendment.
Okay. You have a second amendment?
Yes.
All right.
Ready? Mr. Chair, I would also like to amend the agenda for a discussion item to add a sixth item to our Board Policy 4316, which I have a copy, if anyone would like to see, which is eligibility for transfer of athletes. Our current policy does not provide for students who are granted a transfer into another high school within our LEA to participate in sports if that sport or sport was not provided in their home school. I believe that if a student is giving a transfer from one high school to another and the new high school provides a sport not offered at the home school and the student chooses to participate in that, that they should be allowed. However, they should only be allowed to participate in that sport or sports that are not offered and no others for the first year of the transfer period. I believe this would be fair to the student and to the other schools in our county, and my hope would be that someday soon, every high school would offer the same in both academics and athletics. And I can quote a particular circumstance if you like.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Howell to have a discussion to amend our 365 rule exceptions. Is that correct? Okay. And do we have a second of that motion?
I'll second it because I'd like to discuss it.
All right. Second by Ms. Roberts. Discussion. Ms. Roberts. I thought you said you had a question.
Yes. No. I mean, I definitely think we need to open this up for discussion. I think it's been brought up before, but even if it's just something, I'm sure it'll get kicked back to committee, but I would like it to be so we can start the discussion on it.
All right. Mr. Dedman.
I almost agree with Ms. Roberts that we do need to have Chad look at it and Ms. Boultonite, I don't know if we can make a decision on it tonight. I don't think we will be able to, but I have no problem with them bringing it back because, Mr. Howell, you know, that particular case he's talking about is very viable and, but I'd like our athletic department to come back and with a recommendation for that.
Any other comments? I would, I would say that I do have a lot of empathy for the situation that you're talking about. My question is, how does it affect the rest of the county? And that's information that I'd need to know from staff, and I don't know that we can answer that tonight. How many schools would this affect today if we had this in place today? But I just, I don't mind having a discussion. I don't know that I'm ready to have a discussion tonight, and I think it needs to, staff should be prepared to have that discussion. It's why I would not want to put it on the agenda tonight.
So, if I may. The policy in question, 4316, is a Gasson County School Board policy. If we want to kick that back to committee and have committee discuss it and then bring it back and discuss it and, or, here's what I don't want to happen. I don't want the bureaucracy of government to get in the way of us making the decision of whether this is right or wrong for students, because a lot of times, we kick stuff back to committee and it never makes it back to a full board discussion, or it's not talked about in committee for several months, whether it be operations or instruction. I think it's happened on both sides since I've been on this board. I just don't want to get lost in bureaucracy because this is a time-sensitive matter. If we were to say, you know what, there needs to be a sixth waiver, and as I look at the 4316 eligibility of transfer students, it makes no sense to me that a student can be a senior in high school and play a sport as a transfer and his brother get a transfer or his sister, and as long as one's playing a sport in the school, then they can play a sport. When a kid who's offered a transfer comes in and then they have a sport that's not even offered at his school, he's told that he can't participate in that, to participate in something they offer, I agree with not to, I don't agree with. I just don't, I'm still going, I'm not going to withdraw this one. I think it needs to be a discussion by the full board. If this board opts not to do that by the vote, I do not want to get lost in committee because that's just more government bureaucracy that we see on all levels, local, state, and federal. So I want to make sure that we have the discussion about it in the time we may.
Mr. Dedman.
Mr. Howell, I halfway agree with you also, but now, well, you had every opportunity the last time we brought this up in front of the board to voice his opinion very strongly, and you did not. And, you know, it kind of puts us, when you come to the Board of Education meeting and decide to have two other items put on there that nobody knows coming up, kind of makes it a little difficult for us. So that's, that's my only concern.
It's a discussion item. I mean, it's simply a discussion item. The last board meeting that we had discerning policy as it relates to athletics was an LEA-to-LEA transfer policy, not a school within a school that, or a school within a transfer, within a county that doesn't have the sports offered. I don't know why we don't have sports offered at all the high schools. We have it academically, we have it athletically. If a, if a class isn't offered, we allow a kid to transfer and take the class. If a sport's not offered and they get to transfer for whatever other reason, they ought to be able to play that sport that's not offered, so.
Ms. Guthrie.
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion that we move ahead because we've heard from Mr. Howell and we appreciate his concerns. This is something that we cannot do tonight, and we will not kick back on it. We will certainly allow Dr. Boultonite and her staff to revisit your concerns, and we will definitely bring it back to you. We realize how time-sensitive it is, but they too will need to have ample time to revisit this concern of the questions that you have. So I would suggest that we have time to look at that again with her staff before we do anything else with that tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Mr. Howell, we, we as a board can charge staff to bring this back to a board and not kick it to a committee, and that'd be my recommendation. Tonight, we're just going to have, I'm, I'm going to say opinions. Yours are probably going to be filled with more information than, than mine because I'm not as up to speed on the entire policy as you are, obviously, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels. So I'm not really prepared, and as Mr. Dedman says, a little bit kind of shocked that these things are being added to the board with no preparation whatsoever. So for that reason, I'm afraid our discussion would just become a bunch of opinions, and I'd much rather get facts and information from staff, even to answer your question, why we don't have a sport in a high school. I think that's a fair question. I think we ought to give staff time to answer that and come back to us. Any other questions or comments? All right. We have a motion and second for the amendment to add eligibility policy for discussion 43.6. Another question, a comment by Mr. Ramsey.
So if, if we don't vote for it on the agenda tonight, can you get, direct the staff and then have it on the next agenda? That's what I would prefer.
Okay. And we'll call for the vote. Those in favor of Mr. Howell's amended motion, show by raising your hand. That's Mr. Howell. Ms. Roberts, those in opposition, show by raising your hand.
I'm going to vote with Mr. Howell, right?
Okay. Be noted that Mr. Dedman voted for, and Guthrie, Collier, Ramsey, and Cherry voted against. So motion fails, and we'll go back to vote on the agenda as presented. Those in favor, show by raising your hand. And that's four. Those against, Mr. Howell against. All right. We have adopted our agenda. The next item is good news, Mr. Booker.
Thank you. And it is a great time of the year for us to celebrate some of the support folks that have been working very hard all summer long. And we had, our school nutrition was recognized with several awards, and we wanted to take a moment to recognize those folks tonight. First, we have two winners in culinary arts baking competition. Both of them are from schools in Cheriville. If I could ask Jill Brackett of Cheriville High School to come forward. She earned first place in the miscellaneous breads category for her strawberry bread entry, and she is...
She'll pass on tonight.
She is joined by Pearlie Croft of John Chavis Middle School, who earned first place in her breakfast entry category for her toast man entry. So we'd like to recognize both of them and thank them. Next, we'd like to recognize Joanne Curvin, who is one of our nutrition supervisors. And you all recognize this crew from yesterday, they were helping out. She received the Martha Gomer Spirit Award, which honors outstanding school nutrition supervisor in North Carolina. She earned it for demonstrating a strong commitment to school nutrition with infectious enthusiasm and a can-do attitude. And anyone who has worked with her knows that is very true. Also want to recognize our entire school depart, the school nutrition department for the Lunch Bell Award, which was given for promotion of its school nutrition and media. It recognizes a significant day where we had Senator Tom Tillis visit the Belmont Central Elementary School. And we knew a lot of good things about our school nutrition team, but it's great to have those outside the county recognize them. And so we have Director and Assistant Director joining us now. I get one more sprint to take a little more picture.
Thank you.
It's one of those great stories that goes on within our community, and we can't really thank people enough. But we have with us tonight Carolyn Niemeyer, and she's joined by her partner in crime, Dr. Niemeyer. And I've asked her to come forward just to give you an update on our Backpack Weekend Food Program. This is a phenomenal thing that goes on in our community, and they're getting ready to crank up, and if it's like last year, they'll quickly exceed 900 children being served by her program, so.
Well, first of all, I want to say, as a community citizen, thank you for your efforts tonight on behalf of every child in this school system and the families that they represent. It's been a busy two days, and I'm tired. I'm sure you all are. Between the beautiful Pleasant Ridge School and the eclipse today, we're sort of overwhelmed. But needless to say, work goes on, and we have been working very hard all summer to prepare for school in a small way compared to what each person here and among all the schools has started. I haven't been here for a few years, at least, to give you an update, and I felt like it was very important for you to know what we're doing and how we're trying to support the help of the children in the school system. The Backpack Weekend Food Program started in October 2011, and our mission was just to provide weekend food for children in the school system that were identified by the school... school personnel that might need food on the weekend. The first year we operated, we served 517 elementary students. This year, we are now in totally K-12, and we serve 998 students in 42 of the 54 schools. The Backpack Program actually provided 224,457 meals this past school year to the students in our system. We currently have about 45 partner churches, school service clubs, and organizations who pack and deliver the food bags to schools each week. As you know, the program began in the basement of Holy Trinity Lutheran Church, and after five years of working wall-to-wall, we grew out of it, so we moved to a warehouse on Linwood Road. The program does continue to be operated by volunteers. Funds to operate the program are secured from grants, donations, partner participation, and fundraisers. If you read the Gazette yesterday, you know we have a fundraiser coming up. In February, we were able to secure the funds to hire part-time administrative assistants, and most of the Backpack Program has moved out of my daughter's bedroom into a formal office now, which we are all very happy for. Each spring, we do ask the participating schools, teachers, parents, and partners to complete a survey about the program. Without measurable results, we, about the program, from the schools, the parents, the teachers, and the partners, we just would not be able to seek adequate grant funding. Grant funding these days, as you know, requires a lot of measurable results. They want to know how their money's being spent, if they're trusting you with it. So we look at four things in the schools that we are able to ask. We look at, has behavior improved? We look at benchmarks, are the quarterly assessments improving with the children so they don't have to worry about being hungry? We look at daily assessment, and we talk about, as you do, EOG scores, are they going to improve because the children have been in class and they're not hungry? The good news is, we had 59.5% of the schools stay that behavior has changed. On the benchmarks, we had 40.4%, the daily assessment, 59.5%, and the EOG scores, about 33%. But this was a lot of positive thinking on behalf of the teachers because when the survey was submitted, the EOG testing had not occurred. The parent surveys offer us lots of wonderful opportunities to know what the kids like and don't like, and I'm sorry the nutrition group has left because our number-one complaint is vegetables. The kids don't like them, but that's sort of normal. The dietitian at Caraman Health, who supports our program, insists that we provide the vegetables because they're part of the caloric intake children need, so we keep hacking away at it. What we've done is secretly try to give them some health tips, and I have some of these if anyone would like to share them with your community. They're printed in English and Spanish, and we have a kid tip, a parent tip, and what's in season, and they get one of these every month. So we're trying very hard to encourage the children in wellness and nutrition within the school system. We also are adding one more elementary partnership this year, so I'm confident that our numbers will be well over 1,000 by the cold, at least by December. It takes a little while to identify children, but they come. Because of a very generous person in this community, we're able to even provide toothbrushes and toothpastes for the students during the cold and flu season each winter, and we've done this now, this will be our sixth year. The dental kits, as we call them, are just simply toothbrush and toothpaste in a baggie, but it's a kit to us. They're put together by anybody I can find, but normally it's by student service clubs that join us. We've had band members from one of the high school's friends, if I have any left now that I haven't asked, and also, we have two medical clinics in the community that their staff has stepped forward and packed them for us. This community has embraced the Backpack Weekend Food Program, as you know, with donations and support. We have over 30 volunteers that come to our warehouse once a month to unload the tractor-trailer of food. They put the partner food orders together and then distribute the food orders, and we like to say, like the mailman in rain, snow, or sleet. The partners in turn have many volunteers at the churches, school clubs, and organizations who pack the food every week into a food bag and deliver these food bags to their partner school. There are so many caring and loving hands that touch this food before a child receives it. I want to thank the schools. I want to thank each person that works with this program, each person that has supported me in this crazy journey that I've had. This will be our seventh year that we're going to be successful in trying to keep your students in school and to let them know that someone cares about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Niemeyer.[976.81][976.81](applause) Ms. Niemeyer, we appreciate your vision and the leadership that you've provided with this, and it has been a great benefit to our community, so we do appreciate it.[991.12][991.12](applause) And when is the gala?
Friday, September 15th.
You'll still take donations and everything for that, I want you to guess, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, that completes our good news for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. The next item is public expression. We do not have anyone signed up for that, so we'll go to the next item, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee Report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Board colleagues. I would like to present the following. On August 15th, at Sherwood Elementary School, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee met. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 p.m. A motion was made and seconded to approve the minutes from the July 25, 2017 meeting with a unanimous vote. A motion was made and seconded with a unanimous vote to add an item to the agenda. Worth noting, the Department of Public Instruction requires all school districts to submit an assessment schedule. Assessment schedules will be posted on the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction website. The Gaston County Schools Assessment Schedule will be presented on August 21st at the regular Board of Education meeting on the consent agenda. Detailed assessment information was presented July 17, 2017, at the Board of Education meeting. The Health Services Department will implement a new procedure regarding student medication beginning 2017-18. All controlled medication must be counted and documented each time it moves from home to school and vice versa. The school social workers have already begun assisting families that need help getting children enrolled in school. They are identifying student needs for school supplies, clothing, and other necessities. The Parent and Community Engagement Plan was shared for elementary, middle, school, and high school levels. The focus for each level will be empowering parents by providing the support and resources they need to help their children be successful. Behavior plans for our schools will concentrate on school-wide expectations, classroom expectations, and providing individual support for teachers. A reduced number of suspensions and increased student engagement are the anticipated results. The high school curriculum facilitators and the Department of Exceptional Children's Program facilitators were in schools supporting teachers and students over 6,000 hours last year. The high school teams are passionate about making sure students are able to take ownership for their learning and able to see results beyond their test scores. The DEC Program facilitators led 86 professional development sessions centered around math, reading, and nonviolence crisis intervention. A motion was made to adjourn and seconded by a unanimous vote. The meeting adjourned, Mr. Chair, at 6:19. I present this from the Board of Education Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, sounds like you've, your committee's been hard at work.
Been busy. Congratulate the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, and her staff.
Thank you. The next item is Operations Committee Report, Mr. Howell.
Mr. Chair, the Operations Committee has not met since the last work session that we did, although we did have an ad hoc committee between the county commissioners and the Board of Education's Operations Committee that met on August 16, 2017. In attendance to that meeting was Mr. Bob Hovis, County Commissioner, Mr. Ronnie Worley, County Commissioner, Mr. Jeff Ramsey, Mr. Brent Moore, and myself, along with Mr. Gary Hoskins from the Cabinet. During the meeting, the ad hoc committee discussed a timeline for the 2018 bond proposal with a ballot date that was confirmed with Adam Reagan at the Board of Elections of May 8, 2018, primary election in Gaston County. Per the 2007 bond, there is a needed time of approximately five months from when the Board of Education votes on a resolution requesting the needed funding as outlined by the work of the Capital Need Steering Committee from the Board of Commissioners. The ad hoc committee discussed the necessity of the two committees, a bond steering committee and a capital need steering committee, which will eventually merge to become one committee for that bond effort, working parallel into one another. And in that, that ad hoc committee was tasked with recruiting members from our community to serve on either or both of these committees, and created a live document that is on a Google contact form that I'll be more than happy to share with the rest of the members of this board. It's already been shared with the Operations Committee, the superintendent, I believe yourself. I'll share it with the rest so that other members of this board can see the spots, whether it be community member, business member, or some other special areas that we have as far as EDC, the chambers, Mont Cross, and the Gaston Chamber, that if you have people that you'd like to recommend that maybe you already have contact with that would be influential on this bond and help be a good driving force. We discussed the need in this 2018 bond to touch all four quadrants of the county, so therefore, we're looking for diversity in population in the area which we draw people from on both of those committees that'll merge to one. The ad hoc committee was, as again, was tasked recruiting those members, a Google Doc that can be edited by anybody who it's shared with. It was agreed upon to continue meeting at Flint Grove Baptist Church Family Life Center at 7:30 a.m. on the dates listed. I will give those to you. August 30th is our next meeting, Wednesday morning, 7:30. September 13th, two weeks later, actually, I think it is being, yeah, two weeks later, the 27th of September, and then one week later, on October 4th. Those meetings are being sunshine by Ms. Loato, as well as the county commissioners are sunshining it through Ms. Donna Buff, so anybody and everybody on this board may attend if they like. So far, myself and one county commissioner have swapped off Bojangles in providing it. I won't guarantee that'll happen every time. Sorry, Mr. Deven.
I hear you.
And that's it for that report unless anybody has any questions.
All right, any other questions, comments? Mr. Ramsey, are there anything you'd like to add?
No, we're going to meet, what, every couple of weeks for now?
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Thank you, guys, for serving on that committee, and that brings us to our next item. Back-to-school report, Mr. Haggins.
Good evening, Chairman Collier, Vice Chairman Ramsey, members of the board, and Superintendent Booker. It is a pleasure to share with you our back-to-school report for the 2017-2018 academic year. In case you haven't heard, it is back-to-school time in Gaston County. This week, as we anticipate the first day of school, our schools are conducting orientation programs for students and parents. Registration is taking place. Teachers and school employees are involved in staff meetings and professional development, and they are preparing our classrooms for teaching and learning, and we are getting ready for our annual back-to-school convocation program on Wednesday. Brighten early on Monday, August 28th, the yellow buses will roll and the school bells will ring as we welcome approximately 32,000 students in pre-kindergarten through high school to our classrooms. The 32,000 figure includes approximately 2,300 seniors in the class of 2018, who are already looking ahead to the future, and more than 2,400 kindergarteners who will begin their K-12 educational journey. This year, Gaston County Schools has more than 1,900 classroom teachers, and approximately 125 of them are new first-year teachers, and that number may be a little higher, and they're going to share with that in a few minutes. The new teachers are participating in the district's Teacher Induction Program for Success, known as TIPS, which is designed to ensure educators thrive in their new career. Again this year, celebrate Gaston County Schools is our theme for the school year. This theme is appropriate as we anticipate our big 50th anniversary of Gaston County Schools coming up next school year. Eleven schools have new principals for the 2017-2018 year, and you see the schools and names listed on the screen. The schools with new principals are HH Beam, Lee Smith, Chapel Grove, Chad Carper, Forest View, Crystal Hauser, WC Friday, Andrea Meyer, Lowell, Kristen Kaiser, McAdville, Lucretia Rice, New Hope, Lynn Whiteside, Page Primary, Bill Kessler, Rankin, Donna Kelly, Robinson, A.T. Pearson, and Southwest, Cindy Hester. We had an excellent grand opening celebration on Sunday for the new Pleasant Ridge Elementary School, and in January, we will do it again for the new Stanley Middle School when it And this is the first time in recent memory that we've had two brand-new school campuses open in the same school year. We also have two new magnet programs this year, the Gifted and Talented Academy at Pleasant Ridge Elementary and the Gaston County Virtual Academy, an online school for middle school students. With the addition of these two magnet programs, we now have five in the district, including the Highland School of Technology, Gaston Early College High School, and the Hawksnest STEAM Academy, which opened last year. Our primary focus again this year will be academic success, the academic success of our students. We have put a lot of time and energy into our various academic programs, and we are seeing positive results. We will know just how well we did and how well we're doing when the state officially releases the test results for the 2016-2017 year, and that release date is Thursday, September 7th, and we hope to have good news about student proficiency, academic growth, and our graduation rate. We want to remind parents that the price for student lunch meals remains the same as last year, $2.70 for elementary schools and $2.80 for middle and high schools, and the breakfast meals cost $1.20 for students. Again this year, we expect to have approximately 16,000 children riding our school buses. We have 210 yellow school buses and 47 white activity buses. This includes 16, that's a, that's a big number for us, 16 new school buses and one new activity bus that were added to the fleet this year to replace older buses. And while we are talking about school buses, we want to remind our parents that school buses, by design, are among the safest vehicles on the road. All buses were inspected over the summer, and they are equipped with security cameras and GPS to ensure student and driver safety. And as our buses get ready to head out for a new school year, we want to remind motorists to use extreme caution when approaching a school bus and to watch for children in the early morning and afternoon hours when the buses are on the road. And before I conclude our back-to-school report, I would like to introduce Dr. Kim Maddox, our Associate Superintendent, and Mr. Joey Clinton, our Executive Director for Human Resources, who will provide the human resources portion of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Superintendent Booker. Mr. Clinton and I appreciate the opportunity to share with you some updates regarding human resources this evening. We would like to start with some historical data. In the 15-16 school year, we hired... In the 15-16 school year, we hired 211 new staff members, 16-17, 242 teachers, and this year, 263 teachers. Of those, we had first-year teachers in 15-16, 152, 168 in 16-17, and 134 this year. In addition, lateral entry teachers in 15-16, 43, 16-17, 84, 17-18, 68 teachers. We also used the Educational Partners International, or EPI, to staff our schools. In 15-16, we had three EPI teachers, 16-17, 14 EPI teachers, and in 17-18, we have hired five EPI teachers. They are on contract with us for three years. One of the things that we're the most excited about that we want to share with you tonight regarding our efforts to staff our schools with the most highly qualified individuals is our relationship with our IHE, which means Institutes of Higher Education, our colleges and universities. We have developed such a strong partnership that this year, we have over 70 student teachers and interns serving in our schools. I'd like to ask Mr. Clinton now to share some other initiatives that have served our district well in staffing our schools with highly qualified teachers. Mr. Clinton?
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Booker. Just a couple of bright spots that we want to talk about here as far as our hiring and recruiting efforts. The recruiting trail never stops, it seems like, in, in human resources. We're constantly looking for folks. I want to say personally, thank you to many of you Board members who have reached out to me with, with names of folks that, that could be possible hires. That has been a tremendous help, and we're always looking for that, so thank you. Early contracts are one of the, the hot new ways that we try to attract some of this young talent. In the 2015-2016 school year, six early contracts were offered out to, to folks graduating, prospective teachers graduating from their institutions of higher learning. This past year, we offered 28 early contracts to new teachers, and, and most all of the, just about every one of the 28 early contracts were, were student teachers that we had in district. So we're very excited about the high number of student teachers that we house and, and that we offer this, this activity of student teaching to, because we know and we recognize that once they, they come into Gaston County, then we can, we can hook them and we can keep them and, and hopefully bring them along and, and put them on our staffs in different places. Job fairs, this past year, we had, we participated in 17 different job fairs at different universities and colleges. We also hosted two of our own job fairs. In the 2017-2018 upcoming school year, we have 20 job fairs that we're gonna participate in, so we're gonna up that number just a little bit. And during that season of, of job fair participation, it is, it is wide open for several of our, our human resource employees, so please work with us there and be thinking about those folks. Gaston County Schools hosts two different job fairs, one in, in the fall, December 15, this coming school year, and we'll also host one on May 18 in the spring. We have these dates strategically placed because Belmont Abbey's graduation date is exactly one week before both of these, these dates, so we try to, try not to impede upon that graduation date, but we try to be close enough so that those individuals don't get away from us before they graduate. We have a great partnership with the Tabah Heights Baptist Church. They let us house our, our job fairs at their location. They've been wonderful to work with, so please, please, if you see any of those folks, let them know how much we appreciate their, their help and their hospitality. Any questions?
Before questions, I would like to add a thank you to the Board. The reflection of increase in the early contracts is your financial stewardship. You'll get a presentation tonight, and you'll adopt our final budget. When you work and have a fun balance, that allows the flexibility that we can offer these contracts with confidence, and we're able to get out and get the talent that Mr. Clinton and Dr. Maddox are talking about before other folks, and we can do it with confidence, and it gives them a sense of, I know where I'm going, and they're not wondering. And it's been a great, we actually, at one of the job fairs, we had one of our principals wouldn't let go of a young lady, took, had her follow him in her car to his school so that he could tour the school and show her the opportunity that would be at Gaston County, and then we were able to offer her an early contract while at that job fair. So it's that kind of aggressive that you see the numbers that, you should draw pause when you go back to the chart that Dr. Maddox presented and recognize that we've gone from needing 211 teachers to 263. That's a large number when you're talking about 1,900 teachers on a percentage basis, but they have been able to secure that, and you see, whereas last year, we had to rely on EPI for 14, they worked very hard to make that down to five. And I think they have some good news to share about where we are on our hiring right now, and if you could share those numbers.
Before you start, Mr. Deben had a question.
I'm, I can ask it now if I like. I noticed in the paper that Charlotte McArthur Schools are the, just a teacher academy high school on the campus of UNC Charlotte.
Yes, sir. That was one of Ann Clark's legacy projects that she worked very hard on. It was not funded in the previous year's budget, and then it was funded in this year's budget.
I would hope that we could look at something along those lines. I mean, that was a fantastic.
You may have seen that UNC Charlotte is also stepping up and wants to develop a full high school on their campus where they're gonna combine several of their early colleges, and so it's a very lucrative partnership between those two organizations.
How many of our schools have teacher cadet classes? Yeah, our high schools is in three or four.
I think it's more than that, man.
I think it's six.
Yeah.
I just thought that was a good idea. You all explore that possibility of a partnership. I know we have a great partnership with the, with Gaston College, but, you know, also we have Belmont Abbey College. I mean, you know, and we were over there on Thursday, and, you know, they are very willing to work with us, and I, I would think if we could grow some of our own teachers, that'd be good. Thank you.
And we have been exploring with the legislation, the ability to, to expand our lateral entry program where we may offer some of that. We're also exploring a TA-to-teacher program. We've been meeting with two different universities on that.
In addition to your seeking out strong teachers for Gaston County Schools and developing a strong partnership with the colleges and universities, I like to think that, once you hire our teachers for Gaston County, I'd like to think that I wouldn't worry about it, because from what Dr. Mingo presented in our meeting last week, once the teachers are hired, they are training the teachers, and they are communicating and offering them every opportunity to feel good and to be professionals in the classroom. So it's a partnership that we are strengthening here in Gaston. I see, once you recruit strong teachers, you have the training via Dr. Mingo and her staff to keep them here, and that's what it's all about. And we thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Chair and Board members, we'd also like to share that we are fully staffed in our elementary schools. We are looking to fill the last two positions at our middle schools, and we have currently five vacancies at the high school level.
You know, the questions or comments while they're here? It's a great job. It's a very job.
We do have a few additional items to share with you. It is important to note that in the new school year, we will continue our focus on school safety, provided the latest technology in our classrooms, work to increase the number of school mentors, and build more relationships with parents, businesses, and community leaders to support our schools. We also will introduce the Stand Up Gaston Anti-Bullying Program in cooperation with the Shelter of Gaston County. We have so much happening in the new school year, and we are excited about what's ahead for our schools. The information I have shared with you and much more is available on the Gaston County Schools website under the back-to-school information link in the quick links section, and you can also access the back-to-school information through our mobile app. And we encourage our students, parents, employees, and the community to stay connected with Gaston County Schools by liking us on Facebook, following with us on Twitter, watching us on YouTube and Spectrum Cable Channel 21, and downloading the mobile app. And we want to wish everyone a great new school year, and we look forward to next Monday, August 28, as we celebrate the first day of school in Gaston County Schools. And that completes our back-to-school report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Ms. Cherry?
Got one question and one comment. To Mr. Clinton, how, how are we looking on bus drivers?
Bus drivers? Currently, we have 14 vacancies for bus drivers, and there was a slide that we, we missed here, but it was, this time last year, we had, I'll just slide back to it here. This time last year, we had 17 positions still available. Right now, we have 14. Now, you gotta understand, and I want all of you to understand, these, these numbers a lot of times are very fluid. The first day of school, we had six, six resignations in, in teaching, and, and so I, it's just constantly ebb and flow, but right now, as of today, there were 14. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And I just want to comment and congratulate Todd and his team for yesterday. They did a phenomenal job in getting everything organized and set up and torn down at Pleasant Ridge. It was a wonderful, wonderful day. Thank you, Todd.
And one last comment, Chairman. I liked Mr. Clinton's terminology, "hook 'em." I liked the way he said it. I noticed that immediately. It's, it's an old high school principal term. You want to hook that teacher. Good job.
All right. Thank you. The next agenda item is new schools' construction update. Mr. Hoskins.
Good evening, Chairman Collier, Vice Chairman Ramsey, members of the Board, Superintendent Booker. I'm here to provide an update on the new construction for the two schools that is going on right now. Anyone that has been to Pleasant Ridge in the last couple weeks will certainly know that this is a team effort. It's not just the architect and the contractor and the subs. We had people from every single department in that school, multiple hours over the last several weeks to help pull that off. So a lot of people, a lot of silent heroes that you'll never really know their names, but they were out there moving boxes, cleaning things up, and just getting the school ready for yesterday. Starting with Stanley Middle School, as Mr. Hagan said, we are gonna be opening that school in January of next year. It will accommodate 800 students. The exterior of the school, the brick exterior walls and the roof are all completed. About half of the windows are finished. They're currently, obviously, installing the other half, so once that gets done, it'll be totally in the dry. They are also finishing up, I believe, the curb and gutter for the parking lot and putting down the gravel, and they'll, they'll start putting the first layer of asphalt in the parking lot, which will really start to make it look like a school from the exterior part of it. As with any project, any large project, construction is always staged throughout the building. This is a picture of the gymnasium, which is really the last stage, and they're using this mainly as storage, similar to what was done in the multipurpose room at, at Pleasant Ridge, if you saw all the stuff in there prior to Sunday. So this is the gymnasium. Walking through the hallway, you can see the HVAC system has been installed. Right above, or really between, the HVAC vents is the electrical tray. This one does not have any wires or cables pulled through it, but if you go on the other side of the building, it does have the wires and cables. So they're currently working on that. Once we get done in the ceiling, we can start putting in the ceiling grids and then drop the ceiling tile in there. And this is just a standard classroom right now, just to let you see sort of where we are. So we're, we're in good shape right now with, with Stanley. Moving on to Pleasant Ridge, we will open, I think, in the past, I said, plan to open, but we will open August 28 for children. We're already open for teachers and employees. We had a great grand opening yesterday. Again, it was an event that was driven by communications and supported by so many other different departments as well. And for those of you that were fortunate enough to attend, there were a lot of people there, and this is a, just a picture. Where the white, or where the yellow is in the ceiling, that's the divider between the multipurpose room and the lunchroom, so that's sort of the halfway mark of that building. There's 300-plus chairs in the multipurpose room, and they were all full. And then you had probably half of the cafeteria tables behind that that were seated with people as well, so very good participation and, and a very good event. This is a picture of the media center. Pepe Jones and her crew have been working the media center all summer, and it's really the first room that really became complete in, in the building, and, and I think everybody really took a lot of pride in that, because when you go up there, you see what this school was gonna become as the other rooms sort of came to fruition. This is a picture of the cafeteria. We're looking back towards the stage, which is where Mr. Booker was during the grand opening, but you see how, how much space we have in that school. And keep in mind, we kept the old multipurpose room as well, so we will have that space as well for these children. This is the entrance, the lobby entrance. Looking back towards the administration area, the principal's office will be on the right-hand side. On the left-hand side, Rick Brown and Boomerang Architects, along with Meteor, did a really good job with the graphics, trying to depict the historical events and significance of West Gastonia and of Pleasant Ridge and Ryan and Forest Heights. You can see the little colored bubbles on the wall. That has some, some description of what the picture represents, and I, and I think they did a really good job of connecting with the community when you entered this main lobby. This is, again, the main lobby, as if you're coming in the front door, those steps take you up to the media center and the second story, and this is when you walk all the way back towards that main lobby. What you see, the, the brown area there, which is probably hay right now, that will be grass, and on back behind, you see the brick, that is existing Pleasant Ridge, and that will be demolished, and we will have playground equipment and, and green space, field space for the children. That's phase two of the project. I've got a couple pictures of just some typical classrooms. The furniture is, is unique in that you can pull it out into small workout sessions or workout groups into threes and fours. It's a lot more mobile than the old, just standard desk with a chair, that's sort of a combo desk combination, so it gives the teacher flexibility to rearrange her class fairly easily based on the needs of her students. I think this is probably a kindergarten classroom as well, and you can see the teachers have really spent a lot of time, I mean, they were not able to come in here until Friday, and so if you were able to come here Sunday, they've only had a day or two to work on their rooms, and they had a lot of stuff. So, so they did a lot of work, and they did a, a really good job, and a lot of them, it's a family affair. They were coming in with their two or three children and, and, you know, just did a really wonderful job. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
A question. A question. It's exciting when we bring a new school online. How are we with budget?
Currently on budget. And obviously, we're opening Pleasant Ridge in August and scheduled to open the middle school in January, as planned.
Great, great.
Say that into the mic.
Well, Ms. Guthrie was clarifying. One of the questions that we were asked is, did you just bring the old books over? We did not. Less than 10% of the existing collection was transferred, and there are over 8,000 titles in the media center.
And a lot of the books that were in the old Pleasant Ridge were used by some of the other schools that needed books, either in the classroom libraries or the media center of the school. So, it all went to good use.
On our August 7th meeting, we were presented with our Gaston County Schools budget resolution. Tonight is an action item for us to adopt it. Mr. Hoskins.
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you mentioned, last meeting, which I think was August 7th, we presented you with a hard copy of the 2017-2018 annual budget, which included the budget resolution. And just as a reminder, the budget resolution is required by North Carolina statute. It includes a number of sections, there are 16 sections in the budget resolution. Each of our primary funding sources has two sections. The first section is the appropriation of the expenditures, and the second section is the acceptance of the funds from the various funding sources. So, you can see, sections one and two of the resolution will be solely the state funding. Sections three and four will represent our local general fund. And just as a side item, we are appropriating $1.2 million of our fund balance in this year's budget. We appropriated $3.2 million in last year's budget, and we were fortunate enough with some additional federal monies that we received and some additional state monies that we received to not have to use that money. So, as we talked about last meeting, our total budgeted revenue for the 2017-2018 is $279 million. 63% of that is coming from state. I will point out that the federal grant money is usually around $20 million. That money comes in over time. That's all that we've had approved at this point in time, but that's normal. We will still be getting Title I, DEC, and all that other money. We put it into the budget, it just hasn't yet been approved by DPI. DPI staff has been cut over the last couple years. Things are coming out a little bit slower from them, but we're certainly confident that we will be receiving that money in the near future. And capital outlay, as I mentioned, I think last meeting, this number is very volatile. It's big right now because we had the $55 million of bonds that were approved a year and a half or so ago. That number will continue to decrease until we have another bond offering, and then you'll see it go back up. As far as the expenditures go, instructional services represent 63% of the money. However, if you took out the capital outlay, which has nothing to do with really operating, and also the charter school money, that number's around 70%. So, that's where all of our, significant portion of our funding and our efforts are going towards is the classroom and to our students. So, that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. This is an action item. I need a motion and a second. Motion by Ms. Guthrie, second by Mr. Dedman. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, you did a good job at the previous meeting answering all those, Mr. Hoskins. All those in favor, show by raising your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hoskins.
Thank you.
The next item is our consent agenda. It's an action item. I need a motion. Motion by Ms. Cherry. Second by Ms. Guthrie. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand. And that's unanimous. All right. Before we get to the superintendent's comments, I'd like to make a charge to staff, two items. The first one is for staff to begin the process of transfer or the legal mechanism required to get the title of Stuart Kramer property to the county. And if you'll update us either by email, Friday letters, or next meeting, appreciate any updates that you might have as you make progress with what's next in doing that. The second charge to staff is to bring back information regarding Policy 4316. And this is based on public expressions regarding this policy, emails that we've received regarding this policy, and Mr. Howell's recommendation tonight. And if you'll bring us the pros and cons back to this board so that we can have an informed discussion. Mr. Booker, that's it. Your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I want to echo what has been said several times tonight. It was great to be at Pleasant Ridge yesterday. As Gary's picture showed, the community came out. It was, we had members of that community who would be senior saints in there that wanted to come and see what was happening in their neighborhood, all the way down to a precious little kindergartner that wanted to see her classroom. So, it was very exciting to be there. And if you had been there throughout the week, it was quite a transformation of where the school was, even from Saturday afternoon to when I pulled up and the big blue ribbons had been tied on columns. And it's the little details like that that Mr. Haggen's and his staff are so good at making sure it's taken care of. And so, we do appreciate all the work Todd that went into that. He was the man running around while I was getting to do all the talking yesterday. So, that, and that's just one example of how busy the district is as we lead up. Tomorrow, our entire faculties will be at three different schools, all the elementary, middle, and high at respective locations, getting some more professional development, which I will say to you, this summer has been, in my 20 years of public education, the best professional development ever offered. It was offered multiple times for folks to do it. And what is really great is to see the participation by our faculty on their own time to come in during summer and get that. We are growing as a district, and it is just awesome to watch it. So, you will see a lot of folks. I will encourage the community, our yellow buses will begin running routes to test those. Be patient with them, because some of them, as Mr. Clinton pointed out, will be inexperienced drivers, learning their routes. But just a lot of great things. We had a stupendous Friday night opening for football games. We were blessed with good weather, with the exception of one of our high schools didn't finish till 11:30 on the road. That game was rather difficult. But teams looked well, and what was really impressive was the sportsmanship that was exhibited throughout the district. And I applaud Mr. Duncan in the meetings that went on with athletic directors. It is important to win games, but it is more important that we are developing these athletes and making them good citizens. So, we look forward to having children back Monday and all that excitement. And I just thank everyone for the contributions they've made to that. That concludes my comments, sir.
Mr. Howell.
Real quick, I just want to make a comment on an article that was published in The Gazette. It was an online piece they did. I wrote an op-ed piece to send in, but I had yet to send it in, and it's kind of gotten past time. But in the op-ed article, I mean, in that piece that The Gazette did, and I wish I could remember the reporter's name, some of you may have seen it, where it talked about the conviction rate in Gaston County and the factors of the conviction rates and where they happened. And within that piece, there was a piece on education. And that article called to light three of our schools, I believe, two elementary schools and maybe a middle school on the western side of the county, that they were the worst schools in that area. And I'd like to argue the fact and present that those schools are not the worst schools in Gaston County. The administration, the staff, the teachers, all the way through the cafeteria staff to the bus drivers are some of the best that we have in the county. They deal with some adversities outside of their control that maybe limit the amount of growth or the amount of achievement that some of those students have. But I would argue that those teachers and that staff and that school are some of the best that we have in the county, and I'd put them up against any other school, east, west, north, or south. So, I think The Gazette did an injustice to those three schools and the people that poured their life into those children. And I just wanted to go on record because I know that could be a punch in the gut, and I'm here to tell them that's not the case.
And I appreciate you sharing that. And I will say to the three schools, they highlighted that its quality goes on there every day. And that when September rolls around, the numbers are released, they'll have to eat their words.
Here, here. Thank you, Mr. Howell, Mr. Booker. All right. We have a need for closed session for two statutes. I'll read those. The first one is closed session for North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Paragraph A3, for consultation with our attorney. In order to consult with the board's attorney and protect the attorney-client privilege and receive advice with respect to the lawsuit, caption MB Realty Group Incorporated and Matt Beckham versus the Gaston County Board of Education in Gaston County. And the next statute, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5, for property. I need a motion and a second and a vote. Motion by Ms. Cherry. Second by Ms. Guthrie. All those in favor to go into closed session, raise your hand, and it's unanimous. We are going into closed session. Second by Ms. Cherry. All those in favor, show by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. We are adjourned.